Call the meeting to order for the Wacomiko County Council Legislative Session 2018-02 for January 16th, 2018. Those who like to stand and join us in the Lord's Prayer and Pledge of Allegiance, please do.
My Father, your glory, I will be with you, thy kingdom come, thy will be done on earth as it is now. Give us this day our daily bread. We are going to share trespasses; this is where we forgive those who trespass against us. And we do not attemptation but deliver us from evil. Thy kingdom and power, the Lord of heaven, amen. Let the nations be thy, of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God indivisible, with the Lord Jesus Christ our God.
Entertain a motion from council to approve the legislative minutes for January 2nd, 2018.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
And corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 19th in reference to the capital improvement program.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 19th, Stormwater Management.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 19th in reference to loans from the Maryland Department of Natural Resources.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Entertain a motion to approve the open work session minutes from December 19th in reference to the Compensation Allowance Commission.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any corrections? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion's carried. Minutes are approved. Good morning, Mrs. Hurley. How are you?
Good morning, Mr. President, county council members, ladies and gentlemen. The first item on the agenda this morning is a public hearing on the capital improvement program for the county for the period of July 1st, 2018 through June 30th, 2023, and the capital budget for fiscal year 19. A public notice was published in the Daily Times stating that a public hearing would be held this morning at 10:00 a.m. Mr. President, if you want, I can go through each department listed in the capital improvement program.
That would be great. At this time, we open floor for a public hearing. Yeah, and if there's any particular section that you're concerned about, when Mrs. Hurley reads it, then you go to the podium, please, state your name, your county of origin or your residency, and what your concerns might be. Thank you.
Okay. The first one is General Services, County Sheriff, Department of Corrections, Public Works, Department 24, Public Works, Rhodes Division, Public Works, Solid Waste Division, Board of Education, Warwick Community College, Public Library, Public Health, Salisbury Ocean City, Wacomiko Regional Airport, Wacomiko Youth and Civic Center, and Recreation and Parks.
Any comments at all, concerns? Seeing none. That concludes the public hearing for the capital improvement program for Wacomiko County.
Okay. Next on the agenda is a presentation by G. Matthew Drew, P.E., co-founder of the Lower Shore Wind Group, and we also have Katerina Enderfeld here as well. You can just give us a couple minutes to finish setting up.
Sure. Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to recognize President of the City Council, Mr. Jack Heath is in the audience. Good to have you here, Jack. Just make sure you're speaking into mics, and if you could first just announce who you are for the people who are watching on Pad 14.
Absolutely. So, good morning. Thanks for the opportunity to present. My name is Matt Drew. I'm the Executive Vice President with AWB Engineers, and I'm also one of the co-founders of a coalition of public and private entities known as Lower Shore Wind. We're going to talk a little bit today about offshore wind, and with me is Katerina Enderfeld from...
That doesn't look like Katerina Enderfeld.
For some reason, it's not showing on the screen. That's why he's taking a look at it.
So my name is Katerina Enderfeld, and I'm the President and CEO for Arcon and Toroid Local Manufacturers, and now also training for workforce. I also was a part of starting the Lower Shore Wind to be able to harness opportunities with offshore wind.
Great. Thank you.
Let's try this one. F8. Maybe hold the function down.
Yeah, you need, it needs to be on duplicate. There we go.
I think if you just talk through that.
But, yeah. No, just hit enter.
There you go. Something happened.
There we go.
No signal. That's good news. Thank you.
Hey, good to see you. It always needs to be on a duplicate monitor.
Thank you.
Good work.
That may be what happened last meeting.
No, that was more than that. Something going on in his computer.
Okay. So the presentation we're going to use today is one that we recently gave to the Chamber of Commerce at their economic forecast. There've been a few changes in the last two weeks since that this presentation was made, and we'll talk about those at the end. So if you have already seen this presentation, you can step out and get a cup of coffee if you'd like to then come back. So again, my name is Matt Drew. With me is Katerina Enderfeld. The subject today is offshore wind and the opportunities that we see here in Maryland. This first slide is something that probably everybody's familiar with here, but I think it's a good place to start. In 2013, the Maryland General Assembly passed legislation which creates an offshore renewable energy credit. And in that legislation, it was engineered so that this credit would provide, in essence, the source of financing to build these offshore wind farms. But it also constrained how much contribution would be made by ratepayers. It stated that there'd be no more than $1.50 a month average increase in the average ratepayers' bill. It set a cap on how many megawatts of power would be done, and a number of other constraints. But that was passed in 2013, so that then allowed for developers to then make application for those energy credits. Two developers have made that application. One is known as U.S. Wind, and the other is known, the parent company is called Deepwater Wind, but their project in Maryland is known as the Skipjack Energy Project. So U.S. Wind and Skipjack applied for the credits about a year and a half ago. In May of 2017, the Public Service Commission weighed both applications and ruled to provide both developers with the OREC that allows for the financing of their projects. This was seen as a complete surprise to everyone in the industry who was following it. I think there had been general consensus that maybe one of the developers would get it, or the Public Service Commission would probably rule against both. They completely surprised the entire industry by choosing both. That was not expected at all. So what that means to this industry is that the Maryland Public Service Commission has made a very, very strong statement that not only do they see this, both these projects as viable and meeting the OREC requirements, but they also could become a very, very great source of economic development for the state of Maryland. And we'll talk a little bit more about that in this presentation. So a little bit about the two projects. The U.S. Wind project is about 32 wind turbines for the first phase. This is directly off of the coast of Ocean City, Maryland. The project cost is about $1.4 billion, and they're going to make their grid connection at, through the Indian River inlet, they're actually going to tie into the Delmarva Power Substation at Indian River. The second project is the Skipjack project. Skipjack is a little bit smaller, about 15 turbines. Actually, it's closer to the coast of Delaware than it is to the coast of Maryland, if you see that blue area on the map. If, from a history standpoint, if everybody remembers the state of Delaware was considering offshore wind about 10 years ago, there's a project that was called Blue Water Development. The Blue Water project didn't come to fruition, but the wind energy area that was defined under the Blue Water project is the same area that's now being repurposed by Deepwater for the Skipjack project. So they're a little bit smaller in size, $720 million in total cost, and their grid connection would be made in Ocean City, Maryland. In order to get that offshore renewable energy credit, both developers agreed to a number of conditions. And this is the part that I think is exciting from an economic development standpoint for the state of Maryland. Both developers were required to invest a total of $12 million in business development grant funds. They're required to create over 2,000 jobs, full-time positions during the development and construction phase of the project. And then, once the construction is complete, for the 20-year lifespan of both the projects, they're required to create 2,766 full-time positions for the operations of the project. So they can't just simply take the energy credit, buy everything from non-Maryland sources, install it, and make money. There's a requirement for local content for both developers.
And in the full-time positions that you're noting here, does that include Maryland employees?
So, all of these employees that I'm noting on this slide have to be Maryland employees.
Have to be Maryland employees.
Yes. Yes. Have to be Maryland employees. Or they don't receive the energy credit.
Okay.
But it's still Maryland.
That's right. Yeah, that's exactly right.
That's exactly right.
In addition to those requirements, there's also a requirement that the marshalling port be in Baltimore. And the marshalling port, from an assembly standpoint, is where all the large components that would be made in other areas are all brought to one common location. Final assembly is performed, and then they're taken out to the wind energy area. So that has to be done in Baltimore. The operations and maintenance, once the projects are built, that has to be done from Ocean City, Maryland. It can't be done from Chinkatig. It can't be done from the Indian River inlet. It has to be built in Maryland. So that's a requirement from the Public Service Commission. And then the operations center has to be located in Maryland as well. Beyond just those direct investments of jobs and economic development for the long-term of the project, there's also a requirement that both developers have to invest $76 million in steel fabrication facilities in the state of Maryland. So, and then in addition to that, they have to make $39 million in port improvements as well. So when you start to read about these requirements, it really goes to kind of the vision that the Public Service Commission had, in that they don't just see this as being, you know, direct jobs today from Maryland associated with these two specific projects. By requiring these large infrastructure improvements be made by the developers, they're also trying to put a stake in the ground in Maryland by saying, "We want Maryland to be the first mover in this new emerging industry." Maryland is at the center of the East Coast. We're in the center of where the future wind energy farms will be, and I have another slide to show that. So they see this as not only, let's not just get jobs for these two projects, let's look at the future even beyond that. So this is the slide. It's kind of a little bit of an eye chart, but where you see that blue dot in the center, that's Salisbury, Maryland, where we're located. If you swing to the right, those are the two wind energy areas that are just off of our coast, off of the Delmarva Peninsula. But then, as you start to scan north, there's two large wind energy areas off the coast of New Jersey. There's a wind energy area directly off of the Hudson River inlet, off of New York City. There's the Block Island wind farms that have been built. But then you see kind of a large green blob to the right of Block Island. That's the Rhode Island, Massachusetts areas. And then, as we go south, there's wind energy areas off of Virginia, directly off of the mouth of the Chesapeake Bay, wind energy area in North Carolina, and then you can see the wind energy areas in South Carolina as well. So we're positioned, you can see our dots right in the center of all those areas. We're positioned to not only serve these first two projects, but future projects up and down the East Coast. So our group, that Katerina and I represent, Lower Shore Wind, we're a coalition of public and private organizations. Your President, Mr. Cannon, has been an active participant in our group, and we appreciate your support greatly.
Sure.
Our focus is on, we see this as a real opportunity, certainly on a statewide basis for the state of Maryland, but we see it as an opportunity for the lower counties, area, region of Worcester, Wacomiko, and Somerset for manufacturing jobs, because this is going to be a brand-new industry that doesn't even exist today, and we think we're poised to take advantage of it. I don't want to steal the thunder, anything. You interrupt me.
You're doing great.
You interrupt me.
I know, you're doing great.
So currently, there's some active opportunities that we're working on now. Metal fabrication for secondary steel, and panel wiring and harnesses are two businesses that Katerina and her team have been actively looking at. And then, I had mentioned the operations and maintenance in Ocean City. I've been working very closely with local developers on that to put the improvements in place, to have a site ready for both the developers when they're at that point. I can stop for a little bit. Do you want to talk a little bit about, any more about your two business opportunities?
Well, of course, we can do that in the end.
Let's do that. Let's do that. Okay. Okay. When it comes to the operations and maintenance piece that I've been working on, our intent is that we would have a local development team develop a site, and then provide a long-term lease to U.S. Wind, and a second long-term lease to Deepwater. From an economic benefit standpoint, if you looked at all the costs associated with the life cycle of a wind farm, let's just say that cost is $3. One of those $3 is the cost for buying the components. So the foundations, the tower, the wind turbine, the blades, the cables, the transformers, all those pieces. So $1 is the components. The second dollar is the planning and installation cost. But the third dollar out of that $3 example that I gave is in operations and maintenance. So over the lifespan of this project, for the next 20 years, there's going to be, on average, about a $36 million a year investment for the next 20 years into just making the operations and maintenance functions happen. And that's all going to be funneled through Ocean City, Maryland. So as you start to think about, like, the manufacturing and service technical businesses that are here in our area already, if you had another $36 million business that's on the scale of some of your businesses, some of Katerina's businesses, or the Maytech MSI businesses, or the Spartech businesses, we have a potential economic benefit coming into our community that's of that size. And I say that, I brought up those examples, because then think about all the other spin-off businesses and induced benefits that'll come from those types of businesses. So that's one of the most exciting things, is that this is not just talking about building a small parts storage building and having a place for crew. This is a real economic engine that's going to come into our area. And I certainly understand I'm not addressing the Worcester County Council today. I'm addressing the Wacomiko County Council, but we're going to see the benefits of that as well, so.
The $36 million is the cost involved, but as you said, there's ancillary benefits, whereas that $36 million would be used to hire people who will be responsible for the operating and maintenance. And those people will buy houses and will buy products, and it just expands to no end.
Yes, that's exactly right.
Right.
That's exactly right.
So if I can add on to that, that 50% of that cost of the $36 million is for material and supplies. And if you just look at the number of gallons of lubrication ore that's going to be needed, we start to see different, I mean, it's like down to that level.
Coffee beads.
Coffee beads. I'm a coffee beads guy, so.
A rise-up boat out on the...
That's exactly right.
Well, 100 vessels out there for installation could probably be very lucrative to get that part going. But what I'm trying to say is that it's not only businesses that get generated or started to do this, existing businesses we keep on doing, exactly what their specialty's on today. They just have an added revenue stream.
Exactly. Exactly. So in addition to the operations and maintenance business itself, there's also going to be a support business which is centered around transportation. So there'll be a requirement for three crew transfer vessels to be built. These are specialty catamarans that are used to take the technical crews. It's usually a crew of about five to seven people for a given work shift, take them from the port facility out to the wind turbines, transfer crews and people to the wind turbines for their daily work, and then return them back to port at night. Each one of those vessels is $4 million a copy. So there's a local business that's looking at establishing a new business to just do the crew transfer vessels, and they're actually looking at a vessel that would be built in Baltimore. So it'd be a Maryland-built vessel for that purpose.
And I can add on to that, that the shipyard has had opportunity, but right now, they're way too busy. So they were actually firsthand asked if they wanted to supply the crew vessels.
Chesapeake Shipbuilding, yeah.
Chesapeake Shipbuilding, yeah. So I just want to make that clear. We didn't jump that one.
Right.
So who is the other builder?
The builder that's looking at these vessels is a company in Baltimore. It's called Maritime Applied Physics. They've built a number of specialty projects for the Navy. If you've been following the Under Armour development that's happening in Baltimore, there's some specialty ferries that carry people back and forth across the harbor is associated with that development, and they're building those vessels.
So they won't be local?
Those will be built in Baltimore. They could certainly use local welders. They could use, you know, a lot of the same labor that we have here, yeah.
No, we don't have anybody at now. And if I'm wrong, and we have somebody around here that can build it, that would be great. But the shipyard is busy. We possibly, about a year ago, the shipyard said that they might be interested in building a barge. But at the same time, we know how they kind of sped up their whole production team, so we're not sure that they even interested in that today. But, no, no, we keep them in mind. And when, well, it started with Tonya. Now, it's basically Steve and the owner, but they're definitely in on this one.
Yeah, they were approached first, and I think he said he has enough contracts to last him for the next eight to 10 years. And that's where his schedule was in this whole process.
What about the guy in Ocean City that built their fireboat? He's local, in Worcester County?
It would be great if somebody would step forward and offer that. That would be fantastic, yeah.
Would you know who it is?
I'll tell you after.
Okay. No, no, I'll give you my business card.
This guy owes secrets.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, he had a shop in Bishopville.
Yes, right across bay.
Okay.
He did a great job building that one.
Now, let's check at that, because whatever we can, we are limited in what we can do on the east shore because of water depth, which means that that's why we have gone, when it looks like we're very narrow in what we're looking for, we look at, okay, so what's possible with our experience, our existing businesses, and the water depth? So what's possible for us to actually aim for? And we've been very kind of, we decided three years ago, okay, these are the areas we're going to go after. A couple of them we will not get, but we could possibly. But we've been very narrow. We don't go after the big foundations. We go after the secondary steel, because we want to make sure that we're not walking into something that we can't do.
Yeah, I think the whole genesis of this was a Salisbury-Wacomiko-based initiative.
Correct.
But keeping in mind that we recognized very early on that it had to be a regional approach in order to even appeal to these multinational companies.
Correct.
Or international companies.
Exactly. Exactly.
And just as an information, I can say that it's, so you know, is that we are, no question about it, on the map for the developers. We worked on that relationship for four years. They've all been down here, and some of you have met some of them when they've been visiting. So whatever we say that we can do, we're going to have a shot at.
Matt, how far along is all this from being approved and starting? And I know it's tied up, isn't it tied up in Annapolis right now? About the distance and all that kind of stuff. So there's certainly some mitigating things that are being looked at right now. From a developer's standpoint, they're not stopping any of their planning activities. U.S. Wind's OREC application says that they're going to be producing power by January of 2020. So that's, you know, less than two years away. November of 2022, so about two years after that is when Deepwater is planning. So both of them have, have to be underway right now to hit those targets. They're both in the process of developing what's called a construction operations plan that has to be submitted to the Bureau of Ocean Energy Management. So if I went back to the slides where I showed you those kind of block pixelated areas that are offshore, those are leased areas that were established by the federal government, and then both the developers bid on and won the rights to develop in those areas. One of the conditions of them developing in those areas is that there's additional submittals after they move forward with a project that have to be done and approved to be able to develop in those areas. So they have to do these construction operation plans. They also have to do environmental assessment plans as well. So they're both in the process of developing those plans, as well as they're both in the process of establishing the large, major contracts for the scopes of the supply. The biggest one is really the wind turbines themselves. So there has certainly been a lot of news about the concerns from a few different areas. One of the areas is with the town of Ocean City, and you had mentioned some things in the General Assembly. There's talk about a lobbyist that's been hired by the town of Ocean City, and the potential of some discussion at the General Assembly level and/or legislation that's going to be introduced. That could all happen. You can kind of guess that we're probably not in favor of that, but be that as it may, that process is outside of what we're focused on. We're not really focused on that. So that's there, but it's not stopping anything.
Well, I guess one of the things I heard was, you know, that the concerns from the town of Ocean City was, you know, the sight of these turbines off the town. And I think one of the questions was, why not move them a few more miles so they're out of sight? And they said that that would kill the project because it would increase the cost that much more. Is that correct?
It would certainly increase the cost. That's correct. It would definitely kill the project. Even aside from the increased costs, if I go back to this early slide, you can see from this slide, those are the two wind energy areas. The lower of the two is the U.S. Wind area that's directly off the coast of Ocean City. And then, if you look to the right, you'll see a brown line that's beyond their wind energy area. That line represents 24 nautical miles. So if you, if it's a requirement that they move their wind energy or their turbines beyond 24 nautical miles, they don't have a wind energy area to build in. beyond 24 nautical miles, they don't have a wind energy area to build in. So yeah, it would definitely.
It's out of the approved area, okay.
Yep, yep.
Well, I think the misnomer is that, that the, the, having the wind farm out there could be a detriment to the Ocean City and tourism, but a study's been done even more recently showing that in areas where they had the wind farms, it wasn't a detriment. Matter of fact, in some instances, they felt that people actually came to that area because they liked it, like they enjoyed it, for what the view is, because that far out, you don't, you're not going to see much of it anyway.
Right, right. In addition, and just to kind of continue that, that idea, there are some benefits to Ocean City. I talked about the thirty-six million dollars in, in economic benefit from the operations and maintenance, that, that's going to happen in Ocean City, Maryland. They're going to be ground zero for that, that economic development. Those structures that support the wind turbines that are in, in the, the water, the, the very first project that was built in the United States, Block Island, they're seeing incredible benefits to, to fishing, recreational fishing around those structures. They're, they're really, really good habitat for marine life, so there's going to be a benefit to fishing. There are examples in Europe where wind energy is seen as a, not just a, a, a benefit to the local economy from a job standpoint, but actually there are people from a tourism standpoint that want to go see the wind energy farms, and there are tourist businesses that have been established that take people on tours of the wind energy areas. And then one, one of the other things that I think Ocean City is in dire need of is that anybody that's been taking a boat in and out of the inlet since Hurricane Sandy, there's been a tremendous shift in, in the, the channel and shoaling in the inlet itself that is going to require a lot of investment by the Army Corps of Engineer to dredge and keep clear. They're, they're starting to have a lot of problems with fishing boats. Anything that can be done to show that there's an even greater need to keep that channel open, such as the development of operations and maintenance and the subsequent crew transfer vessel traffic, is only going to strengthen Ocean City's request for funding to keep that, that inlet open.
Because the water been needed.
That's right.
I'm questioned, I, I see a lot of solar farms, large ones popping up in Wycomico and Acomet County. What is the opposition to wind farms in Wycomico County? And possibly in the bay, in our little portion of the bay area?
So for land-based wind?
Well, it doesn't have to be land-based, but it can be put out in the bay. They were talking about that in Somerset County, but I knew there was opposition against that.
I th, I think from a, and I'm not an expert on this, but the little I know, when you look at the wind speed maps, and therefore, if you, if you think about wind speed as being the thing that, that these developers are trying to harvest.
To generate.
The wind speeds are, are, are much, much lower in Wycomico care, Wycomico County and the water associated with it. It's not until you get down south to Chrisfield that you probably stand the first chance of having an economically viable wind turbine. And the town of Chrisfield's had, uh, put a, a 750 megawatt system in about a year ago for the waste treatment plant. So, so that's probably as close as you're going to get from having a resource that's suitable for harvesting, if you think of it that way. So. So there are some, some, we talked a little about the town of Ocean City, there certainly are some rough seas that are being looked at for both the developers. In addition to the town of Ocean City, there's also been legislation introduced by Representative Harris that would, that would bar any federal funds to be used for offshore wind that's closer than 24 nautical miles to the coast of Ocean City. So again, if, if that were to happen, this is probably a better slide than the one I showed you before, but the slide on the left, that yellow line shows you where the 24-mile limit is, so if, if that were to come into effect, it would, it would completely bar any development in the U.S. Wind area, and it would cut the deepwater area by about a third. They could still develop because they're more closely aligned with Delaware, but, but there is a portion that would be impacted of their wind energy area.
Can I just add on something to that, to this? And it's just that, I just want to make clear that this project has had its due process in Maryland. It's spent seven years in legislation, public hearings, it's, it's gone through its pub, already gone through its process. So this is something that's coming from the left field with the, the big, and I understand the concerns, I do, but at the same time, it's when experience shows that the concerns are not valid, we're talking about a different thing, and the experience is what we can base it on, not what we think. So there is a fear, but the main thing here is that this has already been through all its due process, so legally, there's nothing that really says that this is going to stop it. But I also want to make clear is that if we allow this to be a hamper, we are losing all our credibility, because, like it or not, but right now, Europe is looking at Maryland, because this is a new industry that come into North America, and there's a big part of Europe that wants to be a part of it, it's a big part of U.S., because the offshore wind construction is going to happen. The question is, are we going to manage to be first or not? And this being an economic benefit is actually depending on us being first, because nobody will invest in two steel fabrication plants. So if we can get this part, thanks to the Public Service Commission and our delegation who, who basically designed the ORECs. But I just want to point that out, we've had a seven-year process before we said Public Service Commission was the last dot, and then this is coming up. And I'm not sure that everybody realized that this coming up, if this poses a delay, we're not going to be interesting anymore, because in that case, New Jersey, or Massachusetts, or New York, or Rhode Island, or whatever project is that comes next is going to go before us, and we lose our first mover status. So I just want to point that out, so we know it's not something that somebody's been trying to slide under and now the offshore wind. Everybody has been very well aware, been invited to public hearings, and we have not received, or they have not verbalized or communicated their fear until now, when it's a done deal.
If the council sees this as a benefit, economic benefit to Wycomico County, what would you think would be the initiatives that we should take in order to maybe try to advocate for this wind farm? What, what do you need, what would you need from this body?
I think first and foremost, if, if there is any discussion in the, the current session of the General Assembly, letters of support, phone calls, meeting with, with committees, if, should any of those things arise, if we can have a show of support from, from this body, that would be extremely beneficial. There are, I had mentioned the, the Maryland Business Development Grant that both of the developers have, have set up funding for. There's been a first round of, of funding, grant funding announced last week, the announcements were made public. One of the recipients is, is standing before you, which is.
I'm sitting.
You're sitting. Which was for training funds associated with the, the welding training center that, that Archon has in place.
Yeah.
And then the other local business was the developer, Deborah Coe, Brad Gillis received a, a grant award of a hundred thousand dollars for the development of the operations and maintenance facility. So the, so the, the other ask would be that the more we can do to promote these business owners who have taken the chance and are putting their toe in the water of this unknown industry and, and are, and are venturing forward with business ideas, a, as they come forward, that, you know, that would help all of us.
Yeah, I think even, even the small advantage we've seen, and I wouldn't, I say, I use that term very loosely too, because you've had, what, three or four graduating classes now from the welding school?
Oh, we had nine.
Nine?
Yes.
And every, every one of them went.
Well, eight, sorry, we have the ninth, okay.
Okay, and, but there's about 10 students that graduate?
Ten to twelve.
And every one of those students has a job waiting when they get out? So that's, I mean, if you really want to know if, if economic development is working, and that was all, that was all based on the initial work to move forward with.
Offshore.
With offshore wind.
Correct.
So we are, we are seeing benefits, and they haven't even, they haven't even started building the, the.
Right. The farm.
No, you're absolutely right, and I mean, if we look at it, we have graduated over ninety students that go out to well-paying jobs, and I think that's the difference. They do not go out to minimum wage jobs, they go out to well-paying jobs.
And the local stu, the local students, yeah.
They're local, local, working at the shipyard, they're working at Delaware Elevator, they're working at Crystal Steel, they're working at Cambridge International. So we have, they're coming back now, and they're part of the graduation. But we have a placement rate of eighty-six or eighty-seven percent, which is like insanely high when it comes to training. So yes, we already see the economic benefits in the community of this.
Well, we appreciate you taking the time. Is any question, John, any questions? Because I know you've, you've been traveling, you've been in Europe, I know, to, to look at the farms there in, in an effort to try to get a better idea, better gr, handle on what we need here locally, and I think between the two have done a great job, because I've seen your presentations, and I know, know the work that you've had to do in Baltimore and Annapolis as well. So I guess what we'll do is we'll, we'll review it at some point in time. If the council does find that we want to advocate for this and try to get some, so we might come back to you and ask for your assistance on maybe the best way to, to phrase the worrying or the terminology.
Absolutely, we're happy to help, thank, and thank you for this opportunity too. Any questions? All right, great. All right, thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all your support, because it's been over the years.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Resolution Number O six, 2018, approving Christie L. Allen, Christine D. Miller, Jeremy J. Mason, Linda M. Girado, and Melanie H. Neal as nominees to be sent to the Director of the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation in accordance with state law to be considered for the position of Supervisor of Assessments for Wycomico County. The person that was in this position was promoted, and by state law, the county executive, with the approval of the county council, is to submit the names of five individuals to the Director of the Maryland Department of Assessments and Taxation to be considered for the position. And we have Mr. Wayne Strasberg, Director of Administration, here to answer any questions.
Entertaining motion, approve Resolution Zero Six, 2018. Second?
Second.
Any questions? It appears to me that in, in the whole process, Wayne, you can come up if you'd like, I, I don't think, really, I have too many questions, some comments. It seems that they went to great lengths to waive any requirements for those individuals to actually live in Wycomico County, and I, I can recognize that, if you want a qualified person is what you want to do.
Yeah, we, the state prescribes a, a means of advertising for the position, sets forth the requirements for the position, so we advertised, we had eighteen responses, and we went through the resumes of the people who responded and selected those people who we felt best met the requirements set forth by the state, and we forwarded those names to you. They then go to, to the state, and the state makes their decision as to who, who they believe should fill the position. The top five people were, I think, very well-qualified people.
I thought it was very interesting that one of my guests, Christine Miller, actually was the only one who actually had a letter of recommendation from the current department head.
Correct.
I can only hope that the state Maryland's looking at that, right?
You know, that's their decision. Our job was to, to follow state law and supply them with the appropriate names, so.
And we're required to turn in five?
It's very interesting.
Mm-hmm.
Very interesting, it's part of COMAR. We'd never encountered this before, because you know Dan Williams has been there for quite some time, so it, it sort of, sort of caught us by surprise.
The window was very tight, too.
Very, very tight window, yeah, but it's a very important job, as you know. So you have to have a person there who, who's well-qualified, and as I said, I think we have five people who would, who would do a good job if selected.
Any questions? Seen all those in favor of Resolution Zero Six, 2018, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Post, motions carried, resolution passes.
Thank you.
Sure.
Next, we have Resolution Number O seven, 2018, to authorize the county executive to acquire forty-three point oh-three acres of land, more or less, located along Brickhill Road, northeast of Rockawalkin Road, being showed on Tax Map Thirty-Seven as parcel one eighty-six for the expansion of the Newland Park landfill. And we have Mr. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration, here if there are any questions.
Entertaining motion to approve Resolution Zero Seven, 2018.
Zulu.
Second?
Second.
Good morning. Weston Young, Assistant Director of Administration. This property that we come before you today is one that we amended the CIP at a previous meeting. We have a window of time, a window of opportunity, since the previous executive order regarding zero waste had been vetoed. This will allow us to permit a new footprint for landfill expansion. Again, we have upward between, I'll say over twenty-five years, possibly twenty-eight years, it's all dependent on how much trash comes in per year, but that much capacity left in the existing landfill. We would like to take this window of opportunity and permit a footprint, basically expanding the existing landfill footprint to include this forty-three acre parcel. Specifically, this property, as mentioned, forty-three point oh-three acres, give or take, and it appraised at six hundred and seventy thousand. We have that money in the solid waste savings. The owner was willing to sell at the appraised value, and this is the approval of the contracted sale.
Okay. Any questions?
Who did the negotiations?
The, the process we followed was we, we got it appraised. That was Bill McCain, and we contacted them ourselves.
So you made the offer?
Yes.
Sure, sure. I see a couple of things. One is the environmental study, what, are you going to have a phase one or a phase two done?
Yeah, there, there's a elaborate environmental process and public hearing processes as part of this. So, so this is to get our foot, to start the permitting process. It could very well, I mean, there's always the, the potential that either public outcry or environmental reasons. I mean, to, to be honest, with the landfill, if, if the property is contaminated, it's probably the landfill's fault, just being brutally honest.
That was going to be my next question, if there is problems, would we still be interested in acquiring it? Because it, you know, we possibly, what we would do with it would make it better if it, it had problems. I didn't, I didn't know what your feelings were on that.
Yeah, it's, we, we have monitoring wells for both gas and groundwater, either along that property now in the road right of way, or on our side of the, the road. So we have a good, good take of what's happening in the groundwater, at least on our adjacent boundary. The, the landfilling process itself is we will excavate it, and we will put in a clay impermeable liner so that what goes on top of it does not leak now in earthquakes or extreme situations, something could happen. If, if it's a poor, poorly constructed, you could have an issue, but that goes with our existing landfill right now. So, so given the nature of the business, we think that the permitting process, which involves environmental work, involves public hearing, so, so we'll reach out to the people that live in that area as well. They'll, they'll have a chance to have their voices heard before it goes forward, but we would not look at breaking ground until maybe twenty-five years down the road. So we'd have time to put a buffer around it and, and things like that for visual and, yeah, other issues like that.
I didn't see anything in the contract to sale contingents on a survey. Were you planning on having a property surveyed?
Yes, yes, there, there was an existing plat done years ago, but, but we would have it surveyed.
We would have that surveyed.
Yeah, we own, we own property adjacent to it, which, which sits between this property and the Collector Road, so it's, it's not just putting a landfill in forty-three acres, we, we own at least twenty-some next to it.
Wasn't any wetlands on there? I didn't see anything.
Do you, see, I, I see a small, isolated wetland. See, I see a small, isolated wetland. As the name suggests, Brick Kiln, we found several pockets where they used to dig for clay. We, when, that section of the Collector Road had significant clay pockets in it, which we were able to utilize at the landfill for capping purposes. So what they would do is when they'd find a pocket of clay, they'd dig it out. So next to, just to the northwest of Stone Tech, we find, we have county-owned properties that contain low-lying excavated areas that over time with trees, they're going to be identified as wetlands just because they're low-wet areas. But the permitting process, you can usually prove that they were isolated, they were not a natural ecosystem. They may have become one. So I do see one wet spot on there, but it's not part of a larger system, and the permitting process has steps to address that.
With the pond that's currently on our property close by, wouldn't that make up for the wetland that we would be taking up?
It's a little more complicated than that. In some cases, depending on the size of the, I'll say, isolated wetland, they'll let us permit over it and not require anything. In other cases, we may have to mitigate elsewhere. But we'll have time to figure that out. They use to allow paying into a fund, and then you look at what is the most cost-effective.
Or turning another piece of property into wetland.
Yeah, and that's the mitigation. Sometimes you can protect existing wetland that could be developed. So by protecting that, that can sometimes count. But those regulations change periodically, and we'll have to see. If we're not touching it until twenty-five years down the road, you know, it could be completely different. So we may want to mitigate it now and go ahead and say we're set. But again, that process, we wouldn't look to touch this twenty-five years. Now, in the case that, and I'm going to argue why we should pursue the purchase of this either way, in the case that we do not get a permit for the expansion of the Newland Park landfill, we need borrow dirt. So we would use that, we would excavate that, and we would have another borrow pit. So there is value there as well, should something happen.
The contract of sale that's included in the briefbook here?
Yes.
And maybe Mrs. Hurley or Mr. Taylor, you can help me with this. Is this part of the resolution itself, or is it just simply reference material for the council?
It's not identified as Exhibit A to the resolution.
Right.
So I would treat it as reference material, but Mr. Taylor can?
Okay, so if the council chooses to approve this resolution, Mr. Taylor, just so we can stay ahead of it, what concerns might you have with the contract of sale or anything in particular that we should get out in front of before we approve the resolution?
I just had one comment on it, and I sent a memo on this to Paul Wilber, as well as the council. I'm sorry, Weston, I didn't include you. I thought Paul would.
I saw Paul's response.
Seen it. And I think it's just a language change that would be wise to do as a matter of just good practice. It's explained in the email, and basically, the language right now for the title accepts anything that might be found in the public records. And essentially, you're kind of wide open. Whatever's there, you're stuck with. So I've suggested some language. It's from a standard Maryland form book on contracts for a purchase of raw land, excuse me, by a developer. And it essentially, the county would have a couple of weeks after the contract signed to do its title exam. If they find anything that's a concern, notify the seller. If the seller doesn't cure, then the county can decide whether it wants to opt out or not, as can the seller, if he can't cure it.
Did you get a response from Mr. Wilber?
No, I haven't, but I sent it out late last night.
A response was sent this morning from Paul. He had mentioned the title examination on his end was complete. I mean, we've had our consultants look at the property as well to see if it was even feasible, and they felt it was worth pursuing. So Paul, Mr. Wilber did respond to your comments, and he felt that.
My comment was mostly, it's just good practice to do it that way, even if you've had your title exam done, because if you haven't, you're at risk.
Yes.
And you, so.
So you're saying Mr. Wilber?
Yeah, Mr. Wilber responded, and he said the title, he, we did the title examination some time ago. And he's confident that in this case, I'm not saying in future cases where we have not done the title research, but I, and again, I'd.
He's saying that there's no, that what Mr. Taylor is suggesting is not necessary, I guess you could say, for lack of better words?
Yes. Not in this case, because they've already performed the title search. And he mentions, you know, and we can provide that if it would provide a level of comfort.
Well, I'd say, you know, we reviewed it, you've been given the advice, take it as you see necessary and.
I'd say it's a toss-up.
Okay, okay.
Okay.
So I guess I have one question on this in terms of, so we are, what are we exactly approving here? Are we approving the contract today?
No, we're just approving.
Okay.
So we can edit the contract.
So the contract will come before us again, okay. Is that correct? Because it says in the contract, the approval of the Wycomico County Council, you know, the contract is contingent upon our approval. So is this the approval of the contract or an authorization to, you know, what legally are we doing today? Is this, is this the last we're going to see of it?
Yeah, I'm going to phone a friend.
The resolution, the resolution is for council to authorize the county executive to acquire the forty-three point oh three acres. And the contract of sale would reference that. That's the legal document to acquire.
That's why I asked my question in the beginning. Should we amend the resolution to say, to?
Approve the contract.
To include the contract as an addendum to the resolution?
We certainly can say as attached as Exhibit A and have it attached, if you wanted to include it as a.
Need a motion?
Yeah, I mean, I don't, I don't know within the opposition to approving the contract, but it seems that if the contract says we have, the council has to approve it, then we should probably approve the contract. You know, we need to, if this is a resolution we're passing, let's make sure that resolution, we approve the contract in the resolution, then.
The way it's drafted right now is you're authorizing the county executive to do what's needed to acquire the forty-three point oh three, and that's where the contract of sale comes in.
I'm just saying, the contingencies in the contract say the council has to, if the council does not approve the contract, the buyer may void the contract. So it seems like we have to approve the contract, not just authorize the executive.
And a resolution.
So we need a motion to amend, include the contract as an amendment to the resolution?
As an exhibit, yes, as an Exhibit A to the resolution.
So we need a motion if we're going to do this?
And then you have to make the decision whether or not you're going to add the legal recommendation.
Sure we are.
Is everybody on board?
But we need an amendment. We need a motion.
Sub move.
Have a motion, a second?
Second.
A second, yeah.
For discussion? Discussion in reference to what Mr. Taylor has recommended?
Well, do you want particular language to amend the resolution?
Well, I believe you have supplied that, isn't that correct?
Well, that was with regard to the contract. I'm speaking now more towards Mr. Kilmer's point, that do you want to have a specific reference to the contract in the resolution, so that you're essentially approving it?
That's what we just, that's what the motion was.
Just as attached.
That's what Matt made that motion.
Yeah, I mean, it should say something like pursuant to the attached contract or something like that.
Yeah, the verbiage is similar to what Mrs. Hurley had stated. Mr. Strasburg?
Just as a point of clarification on title, I read Paul's response this morning, and what Paul has written is that he has reviewed the title as county attorney and finds it acceptable, if that helps clarify.
Understood.
So do we want to change the language?
Except the council is the way you want to take Mr. Taylor's.
I think it's kind of a toss-up at this point. I think it is good practice to have a tight contract and not have the potential risk. But if the title exam has been done, and the county attorney is satisfactory with it, in this instance, it's probably not necessary.
Do we obtain title insurance?
That's, yeah, that's up to the county.
We insure. I'd have to check specific, but we insure all our property, all our equipment. We add things, but.
That's not what I'm talking about, title insurance.
Title insurance. I wish Paul Wilber was here, because he.
I mean, that's a common practice for most people that are buying properties.
Any other discussion, proposals, suggestions? Okay, seen none. All those in favor of?
Yes.
The amendment, Matt's amendment?
Put all that first.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. All those in favor of the amendment as proposed by Councilman Holloway, Matt Holloway, say aye.
Aye.
Post. Motion's carried. Amendment has been approved. Any more discussion on the resolution as amended? Seen none. All those in favor of resolution zero seven, two thousand and eighteen, say aye.
Aye.
As amended. Opposed? Motion's carried. Resolution as amended has been approved.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor. At this time, we open the floor for public comments. If you have any comments that you would like to make in general, come to the podium, please, state your name, your county of residence, and your concerns.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the county council, Mr. County Executive, and President of the City Council. Even though it's, what I have to say really will possibly of interest to all of you, so I'd like to include you. My name is John Grouse. I'm representing the Board of the Wycomico Environmental Trust. And I'm here today, first of all, to thank you for the work you're doing to promote a healthy environment, economy, and educational system that benefit our citizens. As you know, the Environmental Trust advocates for legislation and programs in Wycomico County that we believe join with your mission of enhancing the quality of life here in the shore. And this wasn't, although it follows up with Matt's presentation, it wasn't planned that way, but it might be part of it. Many people are aware that we monitor the Chesapeake and county waterways, as well as advocate for the protection and preservation of habitat and healthy natural environments. Our goal is to educate ourselves and our officials and citizens, so you can appreciate and enjoy, so we can all appreciate and enjoy, and join in protecting our exceptional natural environment. On Friday, February second, the Environmental Trust will host a legislative summit at the University House, formerly the Salisbury University President's House, on Camden Avenue, just opposite Hallway Hall. This program will inform guests about important environmental legislation, which will be considered by the Maryland General Assembly in the current session. I'm here to personally invite you, each of you, the county council members, the county executive, the city council, we have to give the same invitation to them, so that the trust, the county citizens, and our officials will all have a clear view and possibly support some of the many enhancements that we can make to state legislation, at the state legislation, to strengthen our quality of life in the environmental areas. The area is scheduled for five thirty to seven. It does include food, so you won't miss your dinner. And a snow date is set for two weeks later, February sixteenth. There is no charge, and you, and your families, your staff, and the public is invited. Within a few days, I will send you an invitation with these details. We hope you will include it on your calendars, Mr. President, if you can attend. And Mr. Executive, we would certainly like you to say a few words. Thank you for your interest in our efforts, as well as those of the many other organizations that are working to make us a better county. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Grouse. Any other public comments? Seen none. That concludes public comments. Council comments?
Some of us had the opportunity to attend the thirty-third annual Martin Luther King birthday event at the Civic Center last night. Councilman Davis, Executive Culver, myself, and Councilman Kilmer were there. It was a very exciting and inspirational event, and if you didn't attend, you missed a good event. It's nice to see everybody there.
Thank you, Councilman Don. Any other council comments? Seen none. Entertaining motion to adjourn, so we can go to open work session. Sub move a second. All in favor? Opposed? First item on the open work session is the capital prudent budget program for public works, including roads and solid waste.
Good morning.
Good morning, how are you?
Doing well.
How's everybody? I think what we really would do is just a very quick overview of the items that have been listed, so we can have a better idea of exactly what it entails.
Yeah, so what I'm going to do is just go through the CIP list and the order that was in your package, starting with the Engineering Division. The first project is funding for the Chesapeake Bay Watershed Improvement Plan, Implementation Plan. This is a reoccurring fee, rather, a reoccurring fund for each year, two hundred thousand, to implement wet projects throughout the county. This is also something that we can use for drainage improvement projects. To tie this into something that's been relevant lately, this is the funding that we were using for the Pratt Road Drainage Study, when we can look at improving drainage and include some form of water quality improvement. Well, this is the fund that we can use to make those improvements. We do have a goal of 2025 of trying to meet all of the, those implementation plan projects and controls. The next project is our, is the Water and Sewer Master Plan. That's for this fiscal year coming up, FY nineteen. It's three hundred thousand to look at recommendations for how the county can provide water and sewer to areas outside of municipal boundaries that currently do not have water and sewer, that might be experiencing failing septic or failing wells.
Where are you going to spend that three hundred thousand?
That's for the actual Water and Sewer Master Plan. So it hasn't been bid out yet. That would be our intention, is to bid that out, and.
And is this going to follow the recommendations that I think were put out about the east side of the ocean?
It would be very similar to that, except instead of just concentrating on that one area, it would be the entire county.
So that three hundred thousand is for a study?
Yes, yes. And that would make recommendations as to whether or not it's better to expand the existing municipal systems or partner with some organization like MES or RTG or somebody like that. The next project is our, the airport water main extension. It's a project for the airport. As you know, we're already doing, we're working on the design. This is also for FY nineteen. The project's for the airport, but because of the, kind of the subject matter expertise being in public works engineering side, it's something that's been added into the engineering section to oversee.
It mentions it'll be paid for by a low-interest loan from MDE.
Correct.
Do you have the details on that, or is that to be determined?
Details as far as like interest rates and things like that?
Yeah, like.
Off the top of my head, I'd have to go in and find out for you.
Mark, I believe, and I'm going from memory, but I believe right now that the interest rate would be one-half of one percent. Very, very low interest rate.
That is.
The next project gets into our Roads Division. This is a project to update and rehabilitate the Anderson Pond Dam. Currently, the county owns the roadbed and the downstream section of the dam. The upstream section of the dam is privately owned. This is a project that we put in. When the project was, the property was recently sold, and during that time... During that time, one of the potential buyers had approached the county about buying or taking ownership of both sides of that dam. There's a private spillway that's controlled, and there are items on the MDE's dam safety list that, you know, they go through once a year and check all our dams. There's some growth in vegetation on the private side that they would like to see cleaned up, which, and some of the improvements really are beyond that property owner's ability to maintain. There are some downstream improvements that we would like to shore up and stabilize as well.
Seeing what we went through at Barron Creek, would it be advantageous for us to pursue that?
I think it would, yes. Yes, and that's what, you know, that's what we would like to pursue with this project.
I mean, we've got a willing participant, it sounds like, on that side.
Well, at the time, the owner that was going to buy it was interested. We've not spoken with the person that won out the bid for that, for that property. Yeah, we would certainly like to take that over. The next project is the Bear Swamp Bridge Replacement. This is a, was a project where Bear Swamp Bridge, dirt road, middle of nowhere. We would like to replace the existing timber bridge with a series of culverts. It's small enough that we can get the bridge off of our system so that we don't have to, don't have to keep maintaining it on our bridge program. We, the inspection's done, the design is underway for the replacement. This is just funding money in the coming fiscal year for that actual construction.
I think that's a good move. I think if you divided the number of cars that cross that into that number, you'd find it was a pretty expensive crossing. It's not a lot of action back there.
Yeah, except during hunting season.
During hunting season, yeah. Yeah, that's a good move.
Right, our next project is a dry storage building at the Roads Facility. We currently have capacity in our existing salt shed for about 700 tons of salt. We use about roughly 160 to 180 tons per storm event for when we get that four to six inches of snow. This would expand our capacity to hold additional salt, but also to hold other items like sand. It's helpful to have dry sand if there's a grease spill from a chicken truck or an oil spill. Currently, all of our sand is, it's just stored outside in a big pile. But it would be very helpful to have dry sand available for spill containment. The next project is the Hobbs Road at Beaver Dam Creek. If you're familiar with it, it's out there by the Bridges Property. The culverts underneath that road need to be replaced. It's our goal to use, and this is for an FY 2020 project. It's our goal to use this as a design build. We think the culverts can be slip lined, instead of having to rip them out and replace, which would see a significant traffic disruption. And then in the meantime, also put in a high, an overflow pipe at a higher elevation in case those pipes weren't, didn't have enough capacity to pass larger storm events.
Have you had any conversation with Mr. Bridge about this?
No, not as of yet. This was, this was something we just put in this year. I know he has a...
Yeah, he's offered cost sharing on this, in case you wanted. He said he'd help pay for it, so. I know, that's what I was thinking. I was looking at it. I said, I don't know if he's gonna want to get involved in that or not. But anyway, I think it would be wise to talk to him, and his gentleman lives on the other side, and I think that's his son, right there.
Our next project, which, and this one's taking place in FY 2021, is very similar to what we just discussed. This one's at Riverside Drive at Huntington Park. Again, where we propose to do a design build to slip line those culverts underneath Riverside Drive, again, to avoid the traffic disruption. Riverside has a lot of traffic on it, and if we can get in there and slip line it, we think it would be a lot, a lot better for everybody.
Can I go back to the Roads?
What's that?
You're going on to solid waste now?
There's one more.
Yeah, there's, there's one more.
No, that's fine, go ahead.
Okay. The last project under Roads Division is the Phase 3 of the US Side Collector. It's funded out for FY 2020 and FY 2021. Again, just completing that work. We have money in this year's budget. It's our plan to try to go in and take care of the stream crossing and do the clearing and grubbing for that portion of the road under FY, or actually under this year's budget, which we have money for. And then these, the 20 and 21 will take care of the rest of the project.
So $2 million, we'll complete that?
That's what we're thinking, yeah.
I was ahead of myself. I'm fine.
Any questions on Roads? I assume we're going to solid waste, right?
Okay, moving on to solid waste, we have, the first projects are Civic Center Recycle, or Civic Center Recycling Center, design and relocation. It's currently located in the Civic Center parking lot. It's our plan to move it a little bit to the south off of Memorial Plaza. Or Park Drive, I'm sorry, Park Drive. Basically, across from where the Salisbury Dog Park is. There's a hill there, and really, the design cost is going into the design of a retaining wall so that we can put the, put the bins down there.
Where the antenna was put up?
Yeah, where the antenna was put up. We've got permission from, you know, with the antenna folks to put a camera up there, the same way we've done with Delmar. This, it'll include lighting, room for parking, concrete pad, so, you know, just basically getting it out of the Civic Center's way, putting it in another location that's still secure and safe.
And kind of out of sight?
Yeah.
I stopped by there this morning, and all the bins are overflowing. If you guys don't have a crew going out there, could you?
Yeah, yeah, with the loss of, yeah, with the loss of SU's site on every street, it's, you know, where empty is.
It's good to see people are using it.
Would you be able to expand this? Will it be larger?
It will be larger.
And this would be for next year's budget, FY 19.
Thank you.
Our next one is the landfill scale house, scale and scale house replacement. This is also for next year, FY 19. Updating the scales, updating the scale houses. When was the last time they were updated?
Those scales have been in place for 20 years or a little bit better. Scale houses the same way. They're, the scales themselves, you know, they are pace scales, so they, they have to be held to a standard. We've actually, due to the age of them, had to up our inspection of the scales to make sure that they were accurate. So instead of going semi-analytical quarterly, and it's just really getting to the point now that, you know, we're just kind of trying to maintain and hold what we have. And so we want to go ahead and, go ahead and get those out of the way, get some replacements in.
You have to maintain those and have them checked by company. Does the state also check them?
Yes, they have been checked by both. At one point, we did condemn one, and we had to shut it down until we could make the repairs to it. And that was, that was the move that created this, going into a quarterly deal with the scale company to make sure that they were accurate.
The next project is, again, solid waste. It's a landfill site drainage revision. Right now, the stormwater that comes off of the hill goes to two ponds. There's Pond A and Pond C. One's over on Brick Kiln Road, the other's situated between the landfill and Roads Division. It's our hope that we can regrade the swales such that the stormwater will drain to the existing borrow pit, and that way, all of the runoff will be kept on-site. By keeping it on-site, it eliminates an avenue for MDE to come in and ding us on a notice of violation for any type of sediment issues. Right now, both ponds, A and C, discharged to waters of the state, eventually one way can its way over to the Wycomico River. So by again, putting in large grass swales, we'll be able to settle the dirt out of the stream faster and keep everything on-site and just take out one more avenue from MDE to get us in trouble.
Is that where we got in trouble last time?
Every time, it's been every time.
That's also in FY 19's budget. The next one is just general convenience center improvements. We're going through and update every year. We're updating the docks, we're updating the compacters, and just general maintenance on the, the convenience center houses and things like that. We have a specific allotment. The next one will be in FY 19 for, for Quantico's dock. And again, it's just a repeating amount for every year, so we can keep those things in good shape. And let's see, the last one. The last one is for Cell 7 construction. Right now, we are currently building Cell 9. The cell numbers aren't being, we're not going 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, you know, we do jump around a little bit. So now we're building Cell 9. This would be for Cell 7 to funding the construction and, or funding the design in FY 2021, and then construction in FY 2022.
Any questions from anyone? Alright.
We appreciate you telling me to take a little time. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the General Services.
It's kind of a similar thing, is that we're just trying to get familiar with exactly the, any specifics that are in the Seattle Department. The department is a large number, the General Services in particular. And we've got to just give you the opportunity one-on-one to go over it.
We've got a lot to take care of.
Yeah. If you could, for the, for the audience, Pate, just let everyone know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Pate Matthews. I'm the recently appointed General Services Supervisor. I've been with the county 13 years. I was previously the Code Enforcement Officer of Planning and Zoning. I think most of you know me.
If I can start real quick. One of the changes we made a few years ago was we started moving all the general building projects under General Services CIP. It used to be if we were dealing with the hurdle building, it would be under Health Department. If we were dealing with corrections, it sort of depends on the extent. If it's the structure itself and heating and air conditioning elements, we put it under General Services. If it's tied more specifically to their operations, we let them manage that project. So that's why you're gonna see, as Pate goes down the list, we are, we're covering a lot of ground here.
We'll start with the hurdle basement floor. Sure, most of you are aware, a few years ago, we had a significant moisture problem in the floor of the Health Department across the street. The problem has reappeared, partially in fact, due to bad material being used. We're having delamination in the floor over there. And the real solution is to move everybody out, jackhammer the floor, find out where the water's coming from, and see if we can determine a fix.
So it wasn't that the building was sinking?
That I can't comment on. I don't know. We've got a water infiltration issue from somewhere.
And I don't want to alarm anybody when I say sinking. I mean, it's just that there's a very small amount, whereas the water table just happened to be right where it is.
Apparently, there is something that is causing water not to get away from that part of the building. We don't know whether it's a topographical feature, whether it's a physical feature. We don't know at this point in time, and we don't actually know the point of infiltration. That's why we have to start opening the floor up and see where it comes from. Once we know where it comes from, we'll be able to determine whether or not it can be repaired and how to repair it. So that's the first item on the list for FY 19. I'm sorry.
Any information shared from any of the buildings that's next to this hurdle building? Whether they're having any problems? Has anybody checked?
Not much.
Say the Wycomico Hotel or to the, to the east?
That's a really good point, Joe, because it goes downhill from there.
Yeah, if you look, if you look at the courthouse, you know, the basement of the courthouse is probably five foot or 10 foot above the basement of the hurdle building, you know, because it's built up on a hill, so I'm just wondering if anybody else along in that general areas having issues.
Yeah, that's a great question. Everything's draining to that, I guess it's the east prong of the Wycomico. To my knowledge, we haven't reached out. I think to John's comment, the additional floor was added to that building at some point, and that, I'm pretty sure that didn't help things. But as Pate was mentioning, until we open up the floor and see exactly, is it tidal related? Is it groundwater related? Is the water being, say, groundwater trying to go someplace and another foundation is blocking it? I, we need to figure that out, because after, you know, at some point, the parking garage came in after that building was there, and could that be impacting things?
Water running off some of the roofs, you know, different, but anyway, it's just...
That's a good point.
That really is a good point.
It's certainly easy to look into. It's easy to look into.
I think that was a pond at one time, wasn't it? A lake at one time?
Yeah, a lake bed.
John and Joe, several years ago, we engaged George Miles Burr to do a study in an attempt to determine what was causing the hydrostatic pressure that was buckling the floor. And I do believe that they looked at that entire vicinity. They, they could really not provide us at the time with, with any information that would lead us to a fix for the problem. So we're really, I think, at a juncture where we have to do what's being proposed. We've got to move the people out of the building. We've got to find, if we can, what the source of the water is. And then if there's a solution, there, there are a number of theories as to what it may be, but at this point in time, they're simply theories.
I guess my question was, is anybody else in the general vicinity having any of the same problems?
Have not, have not heard that, Joe, but I will explore that. I'll explore that. Thank you.
So the first year, we'd be, we'd be asking for funding to do our research, open the floor up. We anticipate this to actually be a time lapse of three years for the whole project. We'd open the floor, and then it would, we'd probably leave it open for a minimum of a year to go through all seasonal cycles to determine, okay, we got water coming up here in the spring, but over here in the fall. So it would give us a good visual on what the appropriate fix would be. And then in FY 20, we'd be doing the reconstruction remediation as it came forward. The next project is a new roof on the Fritz Health Building, which is on Carroll Street. And this is for FY 20. And this would be a situation where we'd have to remove all the mechanicals from the roof, remove the roof down to the deck, start over again, put mechanicals back on. It's just a, basically a regular maintenance item that's due. The next item is replacement of the heating units at the Wycomico Nursing Home. And right now, we have several different kinds of units over there with all kinds of issues. We're keeping them running on a shoestring. What we plan on doing is replacing everything with light units, replumbing the units that currently aren't up to standard. currently aren't up to standard, and standardizing the holes that are in the walls. For those of you that aren't familiar, PTAC unit is like what you see in a hotel. It's the heating, air conditioning unit, self-contained in the wall. And they're coming up on the end of their useful life.
Fifty-six of them?
Again, useful life of these is twenty to twenty-five years. So it's fifty-six. And the other thing is, once we have a standard hole for all of them and a standard unit, theoretically, the replacement at the next point in time would be cheaper. But with inflation, it won't be. So that being said. Next, we have the replacement, actually, an installation of a pitched roof on the Extension Office at Natick Oak and on Quantico Road. We've had significant leakage issues over there for the last three years. The only way to fix it is to put a trussed pitched metal roof on the building and eliminate the possibility of water laying on a flat roof. We also have the old heating and air conditioning unit on the roof that would be removed, thus eliminating another another area that we're experiencing leaks over there, just about every ring.
Let me get the next one. I'll take the next one.
Okay, okay.
Okay, so the next item on the list is the Circuit Court Complex Remodeling and Renovation. If you look at this, this had a prior appropriation. When we bid the plans, the bids came in significantly higher. And there were two main reasons. We tried to value engineer, but what we found, one is what was not considered in previous cost. We have a HVAC system, and Pete can go into the details. But if we do this renovation and then have to replace this HVAC unit at a later date, it's going to be more expensive and we're going to be tearing up stuff. So now's the time to replace the unit there. And then in the development of the plans, there were some adjustments to be made for PREA regulations, the Prison Rape Elimination Act. You have to keep juveniles and adults separate, and there's soundproofing and additional expenses that were not originally considered. We have the Circuit Court Administrator in the crowd if you have any specific questions regarding those regulations. However, the request in FY nineteen for eight hundred thousand will help us close this project out and build that because that is desperately needed space for Judge Sarbanes and his his folks. And he unfortunately was unable to make it.
Any questions? Okay. John?
Okay. Next on our list is replacement of air conditioning and heating units in the new courthouse. Presently, we have, these units are original to the building. I believe the building was built in ninety-one, so that puts them twenty-six, twenty-seven years old. The units that are there are no longer made. We can't get parts for them. And right now, we have presently six units offline. The court reporters have not had heating and air conditioning since September. Every day, we get a notification of a problem over there. So what we're proposing is replacing all the old equipment with new, more efficient equipment. And one of the kickers here, if we go back to the design of the building, nobody thought about taking the old equipment out at some point in time. So we're probably going to have to cut a doorway, much like in the telephone building next door at each floor. We're probably going to have to cut a doorway in the side of the building to get the original equipment out. That's going to be an added expense that's included in this dollar amount.
It's included, you said?
Yes. We're hoping we can use a window opening and expand it somewhat because this this equipment is has to be creamed in and out. The other choice would be to basically take it apart as small as we could get it, take a window unit out, take it through a courtroom, and then we still have to get new equipment back in. So we set it up this time with a permanent opening, much like you see on the telephone building. And we're done with it for thirty years. When they need to do it again, they've got easy access and they're good to go.
Hopefully.
And last but not least on our list is replacement of the roof of this building in FY twenty. It's getting to the end of its life expectancy. There are at least two layers on there now, possibly three, which means we'd go right down through the deck and start with a new roof system. Whatever we can clean up while we're up there, we would do. By that, I mean removing whatever can be removed.
Pete, do you have an engineering company look at this this roof before you would make that decision?
Yes.
You did?
Yes. I believe George Miles and Burr was consulted on this. But if you go up there right now, there there are some bubbles in there almost as big as this desktop. Just from delamination.
Who's the Code Enforcement Officer now?
Rick Wire.
He was just here, wasn't he?
Me too.
I thought I saw him earlier. You have a question? Anything else, gentlemen? No, that's it for General Services. We appreciate it. Thank you very much.
That's it.
I think I'm the next item.
Congrats on the new job, Pete.
Yeah?
Congrats on the new job.
Thank you. It's been exciting.
Are you next, Weston?
I believe so.
Okay. The next item that we have on the agenda is the Solid Waste Management Plan Amendment.
Sure. So I want to say it was twenty fifteen or twenty sixteen, we brought this before you. This is a ten-year solid waste plan. This is required by the state for our solid waste department, basically outlining what we're looking at in terms of how we handle solid waste, how we handle recycling and all of that. As part of the getting a permit to expand the landfill, we need to modify this document to include expansion because previously, we didn't think expansion was an option. So we added that on there. In addition, the consultants made some other minor changes, but the the changes start page thirty-two in the document. It goes into, you know, the alternatives considered, why an expansion rather than putting a new one elsewhere makes sense. We already will utilize the same scale house, the same riser house. So there's a lot of infrastructure that we would not have to put in by keeping it local, keeping it adjacent. It touches on other alternatives for for that, pros and cons. And then one of the things that comes up periodically is it mentions curbside recycling because it's something we we have considered and we've considered it seriously. One of the sentences kind of nails it for us, and it says, "The rural the rural nature of the county outside the city of Salisbury would likely yield relatively small quantities of recyclables for the cost and effort required to run collection trucks." We don't have that infrastructure right now. We could, we could look at it, but but we do not, and we have citizens self-sort. We're glad citizens do that. It saves us costs. You know, we, I know solid waste and public works are actively looking for new locations to replace the city of Fruitland and the Avery Street and just to give citizens more options. There's been some talk with Delmar trying to help them, the town of Delmar, trying to help them with some increasing their recycling within their corporate limits. The end of the document had some minor changes as well that basically talked about the short-term planning to long-term planning for the landfill. But but the document, you you all have seen before, and this is just minor changes to include primarily to include expansion of the landfill. And that's one of the requirements of the permitting process.
So what we're seeing, the highlighting sections are what you did.
Is what is changed, correct?
Right.
Hey, Weston, on the recycling with the different changes, are we still at around thirty-five percent?
Oh, we've been closer to forty-five percent.
Forty-five?
Yes. And what makes that impressive is that that is based on the, that percentage is based on the tonnage of trash that came in each year, and we've seen an uptick. So I want to say the last year we had recorded, we typically averaged a hundred thousand tons of of waste a year coming to the landfill. The last, so it would it would have been for twenty sixteen, the calendar year twenty sixteen, we had a hundred and twenty thousand tons, so a twenty percent increase in the amount of trash that's coming. We've maintained a recycling rate equivalent to that. So our recycling would have to go up twenty percent to hold the forty to forty-five percent that we've been. So, yeah, kudos to all the businesses and citizens that that recycle. We're looking at other opportunities and and looking at other avenues for recycling different products ourselves. And, yeah, it's, I think, the Solid Waste Division puts in a lot of hard work to keep it cost-effective in terms of profitability, selling. We we have Somerset and Dorchester bringing their recyclables to us. So we bail it. We, so it saves them at least that process. And then we can build up quantities of recyclables that some of the bigger companies out there are willing to bid on.
Also noted that recyclables have gone down in price.
And recyclables have been, and and it's, it seems like it's only going to get worse. A lot of it goes to China, and they've had some contamination issues. So they're getting very picky. I think they call it Operation Greensword or something, but it's, they're getting very picky about what recyclables they bring in, and they've been known to send whole shipping barges back to the countries that sent them if they didn't meet their their criteria. So we're still, with all this expansion talk, I want to make sure everybody understands. And I elaborate elaborated it in an email to you all some time ago, but we're we are, we're proud of our recycling rate, and we hope to only make it go up with those efforts because that will extend the life of our landfill even further.
That's right.
So there's, there's lots of benefits to that.
Any questions?
Any questions? This will require a public hearing. I don't know.
It has to be advertised two times. So the earliest we can have that is February the sixth.
Okay. All right. Sounds good.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you all.
Thank you, Weston. Next item on the agenda, Stormwater Management and the Winter Storm Grayson Update. Mr. Baker is anxious and waiting.
Hello again. So I'll start with the on the stormwater management side. The, it's been a short month, the holiday in between there and with the the snow has taken up the majority of our time. But Pratt Road, the drainage site for that has been awarded and that's started. And there was also, I don't know if you recall, there was a a smaller survey project where we had several locations throughout the county that we needed to get surveyed so that we could provide better drainage through those communities. There was, it was six roads, and that has been completed. The, we're expecting the survey results back later this week. And just as a refresher, that included Brown Road, Douglas Road, Fawn Drive, Largo Terrace, Havacy Drive, and the sixth one escapes me. But, yeah. So that, we have been seeing progress on moving forward with with improvements and knowing what improvements we need to make for the drainage systems in those areas.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so on to snow.
Just one question.
Yes.
Where did we leave off the last time with the with the hiring of the in-chairing company?
We, we.
We're moving forward with that.
Yes, yeah. Like I said, that that has been awarded. That got awarded to Davis, Bone, and Friddell.
And part of that, part of their efforts will be to seek out a grant to help pay for the total cost?
Yes.
Is it still correct, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thanks.
Mm-hmm. Any questions? So moving on to to snow removal. So we got a little over a foot of snow about a week ago. We sent the crews out starting, the salt crews went out starting at nine P M. on Wednesday, and basically, we had everyone running from nine P M. on Wednesday till about four, five o'clock on Sunday. The first two days, we had everyone on staff. Some of the guys worked eighteen, twenty-four, thirty-six hours. There were, we would, in the evenings, we would have skeleton crews out trying to keep the roads open. On Saturday and Sunday, we switched over to shift work and had three eight-hour shifts. So again, folks were going twenty-four, seven. Lee, Dave Candy, they were out driving trucks, eleven P M. to seven A M. Joe was driving a truck. Executive Culver was driving a truck. So, I mean, everybody, it was all hands on deck. We had a lot of problems with the wind. It was a light snow. I can tell you myself and Mark Whitelock, we plowed Rockawalken from three forty-nine out to fifty. And by the time we got back to three forty-nine, it looked like we hadn't plowed anything. And all we were doing was just going up and back. We did that four times. We had sections of road that we had to, we have a large V plow that gets attached to our grader that we needed to open up some of the roads. The problems really were around the farms in the outlying areas. That wind was just taking the snow back out onto the roads. We also had issues with folks being out on the road. There was a very, the public gave very little heedance to the to the state of emergency. They were out on the road, they were getting stuck, they were blocking our plows. We, you know, we just could not get around them. We were getting calls from communities, hey, you haven't touched our road. That's because somebody came out, took a right, got stuck. The person behind them came out and said, oh, that car's stuck. I'll take a left. They took a left, they got stuck, and then we couldn't get in. We were out trying to clear Robbins Avenue. We were working with the Sheriff's Department. There were three vehicles stuck on the Dykes roadside. There were two vehicles stuck on the Snow Hill roadside. Sheriff's Department came out, they were going to tow the two vehicles out of the way. As we're standing there, a truck, pickup truck drives around us, drives out into the farm field, back onto Robbins Avenue, and proceeded to get stuck. So where we thought we were coming in from the short side, we got it coming in from, now we had three vehicles no matter which way. Fortunately, we were able to get the V plow in there by coming in along from the Dykes roadside. There wasn't enough room. The the folks that got stuck had gotten stuck all on one side, so we were able to get around them. But that that's been a large part of the challenge. I know there's been a lot of calls about folks saying, hey, you forgot me, you forgot me, you didn't plow my roads. In almost all of those cases, we can go into our GPS system and see, well, no, here's the truck that went through, here's the day it went through, here's the time it went through. I know there's people that will disagree with that. And I'm sure there probably are a couple roads out there that did not get hit as much as they should, but I can tell you, almost every call that we've gotten, a road not getting touched, we have GPS data to show otherwise. Now, the GPS data is on our larger trucks, it's not on all of our pickups. I'd like to expand that to include the pickup so we can provide better data to the citizens when they call that one truck was going through. I know there's lots of calls about folks, their their driveways getting plowed closed, mailboxes getting plowed closed. And a lot of that relates back to what vehicle goes through the community. Our pickup trucks have articulating plows, which means they can form a spike, they can send it to one side, they can form a cup. And if you have that articulating plow on your truck, when you go by the driveway, you cup it up, push away from your driveway, and then drop it back off in front of their yard. That's great. The larger trucks, the tandems, have fixed wing, and the only place they can send it is.
To the right.
To the right. So, yeah, yes. You know, we've tried to help folks out. We've gotten some calls in from folks that were having medical emergencies, and we would send send them back out there. But, you know, I got, there were some folks we just weren't able to help. We were out trying to trying to keep the roads open and clear, and we did our best to prioritize it. I can tell you, we put down about two hundred and fifty tons of salt over this last storm. We had a very large problem with our vehicles breaking down. We had fifteen, I'm sorry, sixteen vehicles broke down, some of them multiple times. We had one vehicle in particular that broke down six times, and there were things ranging from the windshield wiper motors burning out because they had been running for so long without a break. We had wiring harnesses melt on our snow plows. We had wiring harnesses melt on our snow plows that we weren't able to articulate them. We had an axle brake on one of our trucks out on Pemberton Drive, so we experienced the full gambit. Again, you know, at some point or another, we have seven trucks that can salt our roads. At one point, four of those trucks were broke down. And a lot of that has to do with the age of the fleet. When we're putting our budget together later this year, I'm going to propose to start beginning replacing some of these larger trucks. I mean, we have some that are from nineteen ninety-four, and you look at them and you say, "Well, you only got fifty thousand miles on it." Yeah, but it's fifty thousand miles of plowing snow with salt in the back of it. It's very, very hard on a vehicle, and those older vehicles just can't take the continuous operation from these type of things. You start on Wednesday and you don't stop until, for even a small break, until Sunday evening, because the guys were still back out on Monday and Tuesday, still running through, you know, and I said, that Wednesday to the end of the Sunday time period was the continuous operation. You know, everybody went home on Sunday night, got some sleep. I know there was some criticism of why are the plows still back in there, but we were back in at Monday morning, still trying to plow, still trying to reopen roads.
Does the county farm out any of the plowing? I know the state used to hire people with dump trucks and plows.
No, no, we do it all ourselves.
The state has the pocketbook to do that.
Does your budget account for the anticipation of storms of this nature? I'm assuming they do to a certain degree, but does this put you over and above what you're?
No, we have money in our budget for overtime, we have money in our budget for, it's called winter maintenance, which includes buying salt and that type of thing. So we have about five hundred tons, despite having used what we did. We placed another order, got another order in, so we're good on salt for the next storm. All of those vehicles, by the way, are back up and running.
How many vehicles do you have that operate?
We have forty-five plow.
Were you able to staff them all?
Um.
Do we need more Joe Holloways?
We always need more Joe Holloways. The, so yes and no. I mean, you got to give the guys a chance to get some sleep, you got to give them a chance to, so could we have, you know, all forty-five trucks running constantly with their current staff level? No. No, we couldn't. But realistically, too, you know, how often do we get these larger snow events? So the one earlier back at the beginning of December, I think we handled pretty smoothly. I think everybody was pretty happy with that. And that was a wet snow that broke a lot of limbs, so after we got the snow off the road, we were, we were out clearing limbs off of the road as well, so.
Well, I want to thank, you know, everybody, and I have done already, but I want to thank everybody for all the work they did, and I want to thank the executive for letting me help you guys out. I don't know how much help I was, but, you know, it opened my eyes, some of the things that, you know, the county roads does go through when they have an event like this.
Just real quick, too, this is public, I mean, I'm going to say this, this is a public works event. I know there's, people say county roads and this solid waste guys are out there every bit. I just want to be sure.
And our sheriff's department and anybody that's, you know, but, you know, I mentioned in my, I think my email, this was, call it the perfect storm, if you want to call a storm like this, high winds, cold temperatures, and a lot of snow. In seventy-eight, we had, we started off with a wet snow to begin with. It started off as a rain, it turned to snow, it got continuously worse, worse, and then a lot of people went for three and four days without electric. We were real fortunate this time that we didn't have those problems. Going three days or four days without electric and all the other problems, people wouldn't have been worried too much about the roads, you know.
Yeah, it's, yeah, you end up with a, you know, with a wet, a light snow, the winds can mess you up, and then the wet snow, you lose your power lines.
So, you know, like I say, it added a whole new perspective to what does go on for me, you know, in an event like this, but I don't know if you can do anything to improve what you did this time. You learn every time you have an event, I think, is what happens, and you've seen this time, and I'm sure there's going to be things you're going to look at differently that makes things better the next time. Fortunately, we don't have these events all that often, you know. So, by the way, what are we going to get tomorrow, do you know?
I've heard an inch.
Sunny and seventy-five.
I've heard accumulations up to an inch.
Okay, all right, so it's not going to be that big a deal.
How do you determine what are priority areas that need to get done first?
So we have eighteen, no, I'm sorry, twenty different sections within the county. We do have a priority map in terms of what roads are salted, which are, you know, we've got over seven hundred miles of road. We salt about two hundred and twenty miles of those, and it's really just based off of, you know, the volume of traffic, the importance of the size of the communities that they're serving. It's the collector roads, the major roads that.
Is it complaint-driven also?
No, well.
Depends who you ask.
Yeah, yeah. In general, you know, we'll get calls in the middle of the night for, from the fire department or someone to say, "Hey, come out and salt this road." And it's a small road in the middle of nowhere that's, you know, that's not on our salt route, and we typically don't do that. It's just a matter of, you know, it's, we've only got so much salt, and if we salted all the roads, you know.
It was so cold, too.
Yeah.
Well, my concern, of course, was the airport access road, which.
It's a salted road.
Yeah, which was plowed early, and then.
And often.
And often, and you had the problem again with the winds blowing.
Yeah, Airport Road is one of our, one of our, on our, on our drift list, basically, because of this field. It'd be really nice if we could plant some shrubs, some bushes, something along those roads.
I was going to bring up the issue of snow fences is something they used to do years ago now. Back in the sixties and seventies, I remember, snow fences were wooden, you know, wooden stakes that were wired together, and I think they've probably progressed now to be plastic, you know, is, I know, we have Wallston Switch Road on the east side, Airport Road on the east side, I think, Popperneck, was it, not Popperneck, but.
Wadysville.
Wadysville, okay. Is there any, would there be anything to maybe working with trying to get snow fences in again? I know you have to work with a landowner, that's a problem.
Well, that's one thing I've undertaken, and I've looked at some things that are done out in the Midwest, would be to talk with the farmers and either pay them or talk to them about leaving X number of rows of corn standing. Corn can act as a snow fence at times as well.
They only do that every other year. Most time, they rotate their crops, you know, or something.
Right, so we only hope we have snow every other year.
Or get Matt to grow some tall grass over there on the west side.
But, you know, it's, you know, we do have limited right of way, and snow fence works best at a certain offset from the road, so, you know, and again, we, you know, we don't have these types of snow events every year, even every other year, so.
Would it be wise to do an experiment, maybe in two or three places next year?
Airport Road is a perfect place, I would, I think, to do it. We also have an issue on Gumby Road at North Shoemaker, that's every time, and then you have a place that's not far, and so a real problem is Beagle Park Drive between Mount Hermann Glen, that's a real big problem. So, you know, there, with that type of road, that's nineteen thousand vehicles a day, it could be very worthwhile to explore something in there as an experiment.
Question I had was, I'm pretty sure that the governor established even the Eastern Shore area as an emergency area. Are we receiving, would we receive funding from that, from the state of Maryland?
It's my understanding we are not. I mean, I know that the governor declared Eastern Shore a state of emergency for the snow event. It's my understanding that the money doesn't start trickling down until the feds declare, and I'm not how sure of that.
We also have to be a threshold, so in other words, this event has to, it would have to be larger than any event that we've had in the past in order to get FEMA reimbursement for that event. So probably, an event that cost more money was the blizzards we had in two thousand and ten in February. So we would have to exceed that dollar amount, and I'm not sure that we did with this storm. So a lot of it has to do with that. The same thing with hurricanes, has to be the dollar amount, and in the state as a whole. So if we just get on the Eastern Shore of Maryland, it's not throughout the whole state, so we're not going to meet that threshold.
I know we had certain billing codes that we were using during the process so that we can pull out how much the storm was costing us.
Okay, I didn't know if that designation just triggered funding right away, or?
I think it allows, open up, the declaration, the emergency declaration opens up the possibilities of garnering resources from other parts of the state to help us. That's one of the purposes of it. And when I say resources, I mean, you know, assistance, not necessarily monetarily, but assistance from other parts of the state.
Got you, okay. Anything else, gentlemen? Any questions? We appreciate your work, and appreciate you coming in and letting us know how we're holding up. Next item on the agenda is a repeat performance from Mr. McKenzie.
Mr. President.
Well, maybe not.
Mr. President, did you want to?
Oh, I'm sorry. We will need to take a couple-minute recess while they change the tape, correct?
Or can do it while he's sitting on there?
Okay, that's fine. We're going to take a two-minute recess, gentlemen.